All right, call this meeting to order at six oh two P M. Uh, this meeting is being reported by the planning board. If any other person is present or recording the meeting, you must notify the chairperson at this time. A public comment, if you wish to comment at some point during the meeting, please raise your hand and the request will be considered at the chair's discretion. In accordance with the A G's open meeting law guidance to allow for as much public participation as time and circumstances permit. Okay, the roll call. Jeff Sauer, Vice Chair, Acting Chair tonight.
The town blood so alternate and looking like voting members.
Eric O'Yugis alternate. Dito.
So run and said member.
Thank you. All right, first for our businesses to approve the meeting minutes of June fifth, and I was. Not at that meeting, so I'll let you guys.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just had a couple of changes. I'm not sure the procedure for making the changes. Eric, can you make note of them or should I?
Yeah, he's pointing out, I pointed, I marked it down on the minutes and then.
Okay.
Board votes as amended.
All right, um. So first of all, at the, like, the first line, um, George was the chair. Not acting chairperson.
These minutes were done by Victor.
Yeah, 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 that's why I was asking about the changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Then also at the very bottom of page one, I believe I abstained from the vote. Uh, to approve the meeting minutes of May first because I wasn't actually attending.
But we also had a conversation about that.
Yeah, I think I still abstain, but I'm not positive.
That if you.
Positive.
If you watch it after the fact, you can approve it. Somebody said that.
George did.
George, yeah, exactly.
So do you want to keep it as three, zero, one, and you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct. That's what I was suggesting, although I have to double check. Um, and then I think. Uh, so it's labeled as an action item, but I believe the discussion of the conceptual subdivision plan at seventy five Oak Hill Road, I think that was like a. Discussion item, not an action item.
Should have been.
Um. And I think the only action item was, um, the A and R endorsement. Which is labeled correctly. That's all I had.
Good catches.
For reviewing that.
Got them all marked on?
Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor? I abstain. Thank you. Wasn't there? All right, on to discussion items. Uh, so the first item, planning board discussion on supporting a new cooling corridors grant application. You want to start the list? We have folks. Please, thank you. Okay, yes, yeah.
Hello, I'm Mary Chickman. This is Margot Jones. We're both members of the tree committees. About a half, a year and a half ago, we came before you with a cooling corridors proposal. Um, which we were in favor of, and in fact, the city was awarded. The money, uh, the work will start this fall, and just as a little pat on our back, we were told it was their favorite of all the proposals they received, so. And we were invited to put in a second round, which seems promising to us. And so, um, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review the document.
Yeah.
Did I quickly walk through it, or how much information do you want?
And I reviewed it.
For the public, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Just for the, just for the record, I would say.
Give you some timeframe.
Quick.
Thoughts, good.
Okay, so keeping it quick, the project is, uh, to take place on Federal Street. Um, between Stanley to the north and East Cleveland Street to the south. Um, it is comprised of two elements. One is removing. Uh, a s- a long strip, about a hundred and eighty foot strip of paved over tree belt. Paved over, bricked over tree belt. It's been a project that's been long on our radar, but as a small nonprofit, we didn't have the ability to do that excavation. Um, so there's that element, and then there's the planting of about forty trees in that area. Um, Margaret, do you want to say a couple of words about why that area is important?
Right, um. It is an entrance way into the city. It's a major thoroughfare for cars, bikes, and pedestrians. Pedestrians are going to the high school, they're taking the bus, they're, uh, going to the recovery center at the old lump. Uh, site, so it's a very active street and it's, it's, it's just. Uh, sprawled dead, I mean, it has.
Really.
Trees at all hardly, um, and, and we're mainly, uh, working on the east side because that's in the designated. E- e- environmental justice.
Oh, really? The e- just the east side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a funny pocket that isn't.
So somebody rich must have lived on the west.
So folks are, don't worry people, it's from.
There's a lot of business.
Donuts up to Lundgren.
Yeah, before Lundgren's, yep, yep.
I'm sorry.
But only on the.
On the east side.
Well, we did plant a couple trees.
Oh, yeah, just a couple.
Right, like four on the west side, but they, they like to see that it's all within E J and that's. Well, this is the U, which is the E J and which is the.
So, yeah, I'll stick to those, so that, so we did some analysis, there, it's definitely within a. E A hotspot and also rated moderate to severe in terms of heat island effect. It's less than, um. Less than ten percent tree cover and over eighty percent impervious surfaces. So we feel like we have a very strong project proposal. Um, the challenges were that on the east side of the, of Federal Street, that's where the overhead utility lines are, so we're limited to a lot of smaller sap through trees, which is. Disappointing, but it's just a reality.
There's always a west side.
Yeah, yeah, we did do a few over on that side, and we also included the, some of the side streets where we could squeeze in some shade trees.
Yeah, and it looks like some young tree's been planted in recent years also on the, the west side.
Yes, yeah.
There is something growing over there.
There's, there's more greenery on the west side, actually, because it borders a park and, yeah.
Yeah.
It would, trees would really shorten the distance for people who live. In that catchment area of Federal Street to walk downtown. And I say that because my daughter was in an apartment for three months on Federal and Shattuck. And she was all excited moving to Greenfield, thinking, great, I can walk everywhere, I can do this. And she's like, I feel less safe here than I did in D C where they were shooting every day in my neighborhood. She was that, because anyway, she says it's just desolate to do that walkout, and she said she wouldn't feel safe, and it's amazing what. Trees and streetscapes do to change that perspective.
Yeah, and so this grant is. This grant would pay to, for, uh, there would be no requirement for the city to do any of the work. The grant would pay for the excavation of the hardscape, the remediation, or replacement of the soil, the seeding of the tree belts, and the planting of the trees. Um, the only.
Watering.
The watering is also paid for under the contract.
They're doing that for two years, that's fantastic. Yeah, watering, well, if you have to stay on top of it. Two years.
That's been a challenge for our small. And for the, and for D P W is to keep up with water.
Turn it off.
So that's a huge.
Who does the water?
The contractor, so in the case of the, the, uh, project that's starting this fall, Amorous Nursery was hired, they're both a grower and a landscaper, so they'll be doing. Both the installation and then the return weekly watering.
Yeah, a lot of times they put those, I don't know what you call them.
Water bags.
Water bags. Water bags, thank you, and they just come fill them up once a week.
Any questions?
This is involved to this, but what, what are you working on now? What's the next proposal?
Well, we're just wrapping up a D C R proposal, which, uh, was just a modest, it was about, uh, twelve thousand dollars, but it paid for a lot of. Technical assistance training for us to run our nursery better, so that's been a really positive thing.
For you said that, um, they're, they're allowing, uh, there's an invitation to.
That's this one, yeah.
That is.
Yeah, yeah. And I also want to point out that it will be a demonstration project. For the ta- for the city to show that tree belts are public. And they are not to be paved over and not to be curb cut free or.
Turned into curb cuts, yeah.
Like, they have been on some projects.
There are examples, I want to raise the awareness.
One of my questions, like, what's the origin of the tree belt being paved over? Is that. Being done unlawfully by private owners, or, um, do you know, you don't know?
I didn't look into the history of this particular tree, the one on the cover, uh, that shows the crumbling, you know.
Yeah.
Brick and pavement. Um, that used, there clearly used to be tree rolls there, and what happened to them, I don't know. And I also don't know, just in general, how it works that a, a business owner can choose to just eradicate, eliminate. You know, the whole thing, but that's a conversation for another day, but I think Margot's point about this being like. A demonstration or a first step to covering some of those spaces is a good point.
What caliber trees, what size?
Uh, two inch, I think.
I think there's a bit of a history of the city yielding to utility companies in the past, that isn't necessarily the case anymore, but. I bet at some point, our company wanted those trees to go away and. Maybe they just did it.
Or the gas company.
Or the gas, or both, yeah.
And also depending on the businesses, how their parking is, it's much easier to have. You know, one curb cut at each end of the property, and the whole thing is just drive in wherever you want and park.
Right, snow removal.
Right.
Yeah, there's lots of arguments for it, but.
Doesn't mean it's right.
No. And I think when there isn't a change of use, there isn't much oversight of site plans.
Right.
So maybe that's something we could all talk about in the future, because. Tree belt should be, for sure.
Should. It should be.
So you don't need approval, this is the discretion?
Uh, yes, we do.
Do. It's planned and it's for, well, I make a motion to approve or support.
I'll second.
Favor?
Did, did we need to finish formal for Erica to vote?
Uh, yeah, I think you have to officially make us.
Okay, do I have to make them voting members officially, or is that just done by default?
I mean, it's obvious that that happened, but it'd be better if you made a public statement that you're eliminating.
And it's. So because we're missing some folks from the regular slate.
Well, why don't I move that to the beginning of the agenda? Before you made motion. Well, yeah, I'm gonna be moving his last statement first and.
Thank you.
Erica Tom will be voting members, and I said that ten minutes ago.
Make a motion to, um. Endorse, approve, what's the?
Support.
Support.
Yeah.
Enthusiastically, perhaps.
Those cooling corridors grant application by the tree committee with enthusiasm.
But before you leave. Because this came up in our discussion in our last meeting, when we were looking at the action steps, so implement, implementation, yeah, action, action step. For the revised, um, master plan. And there was, there's a lot of, the first section is about trees and tree canopy. But there's one thing that, um, I wanted to add was. Getting, doing something that incentivizes getting the public to be stewards, so along this corridor, for example, if somebody wanted. Somebody who's on Federal, Federal Street and wants to plant some trees, and, because there's a lot of residential properties going up the street, they want to plant some trees. Is there any way we could incentivize that by? Does the city have a tree they could offer?
Um, we do, uh, we have, we have a tree nursery, Greenfield Tree Committee has a tree nursery, and they offer trees to residents, we plant them for them. All they have to do is water them.
Great, so.
They just sign up.
Part of the, part of the, the line that I'm proposing to change in this is to add, promote that program, because a lot of people don't know about it. And really promote to the point where anywhere in Greenfield, you can, as a homeowner. The city will help you plant a tree as long as you take care of it for two years.
Is there a waiting list, or kind of a shortage, or does it take a long while to get the tree or?
We're, we're getting caught up, you know, we've, we've planted about sixty trees so far this year, and we're about to do another. Twenty or so, and then we'll be almost caught up, and about two years ago, we, uh, started coordinating with D P W, so if D P W gets a request, we are now sharing. The administrative person with D P W shared, we, we shared a Google sheet with them, so we're both inputting information into the same sheet, because what was happening in the past is people would. Call in and three years later, you know, they, it would, it was just not coordinated, so now it's well coordinated.
And it's also, as somebody new to town, it's hard to find that information. And I, I actively looked, because I worked in other, I did a project in Holyoke where I put all these trees as part of the thing, and. They just happened to have received one of the grants for heat islands from D C R, and so it was easy to get a fantastic assortment of twelve trees. But here, I, I couldn't find it.
Okay.
I mean, now I'm, I'm more knowledgeable of how, how things work in Greenfield, but it should be very easy for anybody to know.
The tree committee is. You can just plant them in the tree belt, because that's public land, so it's a combination of planting in the tree belt and then also planting in people's, on their property too.
Yeah, you can't just plant anywhere, it's got to be outside of the right of way, and you want to have, you want to encourage the right tree and.
The tree belt is the right of way.
Yeah.
It's public land.
You're considering the right, the tree belt is in the right of way?
Public property.
Because I was told you have to be within your, outside of the right of way and on private property.
That's not the tree belt, that's. The, the right of way.
Right, well, that's what I'm just trying to clarify, I, because I was.
Neither side, and fifteen feet to either side of the payment is the tree belt.
Yeah, typically the sidewalk.
Okay, okay. But it's still part of the right of way.
But it's part of the right of way.
Yeah, okay, I, yeah, I was told right of way, edge to edge, right of way, so I didn't. I didn't know that.
No, it's for either one.
For either.
It's within twenty feet of a sidewalk or where there's no sidewalk within a road. So that there still is a public benefit, and so we're not planting trees in people's backyards. And we're also not planting little dinky flowering trees where there's a place for a shade tree, so if somebody really wants a little flowering tree.
These circle.
They'll say, yeah. Somebody on the tree committee said, we're not in the landscaping business, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And we do need.
And we don't, we keep away from intersections, you keep.
Of course.
Back, keep line of.
Gratitude.
So was that a?
Yes, we all got our approval.
Okay.
You know, that we, I think. Well, no, we had the approval, the question was after that, post approval, it was just aside. Because we added a little comment to that, but in other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for making that happen. To the success.
Letter, uh, George can sign it Monday morning then.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Athena said she'd follow up with you.
By the way, I also want to compliment you on the comments they made to your proposal that it was their favorite. That's just for me, another star in Greenfield's hat about how we're so innovative, and we are, are just doing amazing things in Greenfield. I, I was, we're trying to talk this up with the business community about how amazing Greenfield is, because all these things nobody knows about. We gotta tune our horn a little bit more.
And Mary was, Mary's the.
Doesn't matter.
We're trying to.
Mister. If you could take out of order, if you're willing to take it out of order, the C and move it up before B, I meant to do that in the agenda, the individuals here.
Yeah.
Might be a longer discussion on master.
We were just talking about that, so no problem, we'll move you guys, we'll swap the order. So we'll jump right to planning board discussion on a potential zoning amendment to allow animal kennels or hospitals by special permit in the limited commercial zoning district.
I'll steer it off with a quick explanation of why this individual is interested in Cherry Rum Plaza and starting a animal hospital business in that location. Where? And that is, uh, in the limited commercial zone at Cherry Rum Plaza?
It's all the way just south of, um, Route Two.
Across the four eighty-nine, um, brass road, so the last.
Like the last parcel before Route Two.
And so right now.
Behind Denny's, across from the.
Yeah.
Corner School.
Exactly, right now, animal, the, the use category in the zoning ordinance is, is animal kennel slash animal hospitals. She's interested in the animal hospital, not kennel. New Ollie's Law, uh, makes it so that we can't regulate kennels anymore. Deputy City Clerk's Office, so this would be an amendment to allow animal hospitals by special permit in the limited commercial zoning district. And I asked her to come here to explain her, uh, request and see if the board's willing to initiate such a zoning amendment change.
So my name is Stephanie Vassar. I am a veterinarian. I grew up in Greenfield, um, my whole family did, my mom still lives at the top of Main Street, that's where my kids are right now. Um, my brother also lives, um, down on Colrain Road. I mean, so we've been here a long time. I currently live in Shelburne, and I run, um, an equine only practice called Great Falls Equine and Veterinary Service, so I'm an ambulatory equine specialist. Right now, um, we're in year ten, I started it in twenty fifteen, grew from being solo to now having four employees and another veterinarian that works with me, and we do. About an hour radius around, and we're the only equine specialty clinic in the area. With that, I, um, am now entering kind of my second decade and was trying to scale my business, and I found that I've kind of built it on my personality and me showing up, and I want to figure out a different way. Um, to kind of, how can I use, be a veterinarian, but a little bit differently? Um, and also throughout my time as an equine vet, I get multiple texts and questions about people's dogs and cats, and they can't get into their veterinarians. Because over the last twenty years, there's been a transition from emergency services being provided by the general practitioner. Um, if you think James Harriet or Dr. Poehl on T V where they do all of the animals. Um, to now having their on-call provided by the emergency clinics, and our main emergency clinic is the one in South Deerfield. Um, there's also one down in, um, West Springfield, and that, those are the two main emergency services for all the way up. To Albany, Manchester, New Hampshire, and Burlington, so even people in Southern Vermont and New Hampshire do not have an option for weekend care. Um, my goal is not to provide emergency, like, trauma care, but to be, mirror kind of the human model of urgent care on the weekend, so. Ear infections, um, kind of went through a list, vomiting, diarrhea, limping, abscesses, things where you can't get into your regular veterinarian. Um, but you kind of complement what they can do, but also, like, we will not provide routine wellness, we won't do surgeries, spay our numbed horses, or no overnight hospitalization. All of those would get kind of triaged to go to South Deerfield to Vesh, the veterinary emergency specialty hospital. Um, I have been looking at properties since October of last year. Um, I was kind of focused in the Home Depot region in there, the, those spaces are too big, um, and too expensive. Or too small, and have kind of stumbled upon Cherry Rum and assumed that it was gonna be, um, in the general commercial and just be by special permit. Um, and then. Found out that it's limited commercial and that it explicitly says in the chart that it's.
And.
It's just in there and. Big N. Um, so what I'm asking is, I'm in, I have a signed letter of intent with the landlord. I have, um, preliminary design plans, I'm meeting with the architect next week, um, to try and get this open as early into twenty twenty-six as possible. Um, I've contacted other vet clinics and kind of let them know what my plan was, so that they didn't find out from planning board minutes, but they found out from me, because I really want this to be collegial. Um, hours are intended to complement theirs, so it's starting at ten A M. on weekdays, that means that they usually have all of their urgent spots filled by ten A M. Um, and also providing the weekend hours.
And you would probably, you would probably refer patients when needed to.
Yeah, and just having, um, open communication, digital records that can be emailed and sent and followed up to local clinics. Um, and also depending on them for referrals as well, so it needs to be mutually beneficial. Um, I already have meetings set up with the Franklin County Tech School for, um, their animal science program to get some co-op kids in there, and G C C is also starting. Of that tech program through them, um, to work with them as well, so it's. Trying to work in as much of this community as possible and also be able to have a place to send the people that text me about their dog and porcupine quills when I.
The classic.
Um, so. I guess there's kind of a difficulty with the definition, because it is lumped in with animal kennels, um, there's also Pioneer Valley Vet Hospital is. Three quarters of a mile one direction, and Greenfield Vet Hospital is a mile the other direction, so, um. It, it's, it doesn't seem like it's out of place by any way means being in that area and in that space that's been vacant for quite a while.
It's a perfect location.
Yeah, so been working very hard on zoning and trying to find the right spot.
And also with that parking, I would say, I mean, you're not submitting, you don't have to submit plans, it's just a, we have to change the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, if you would be with, that this is a good idea, you say that you would initiate zoning.
But I would say it's an excellent location, because when you have a distressed animal and you don't have all that parking area and that ease of being able to pull up the vehicle and. Transfer the animal.
And there's still the drive up from when it was C V S in nineteen, in like the nineties, and has a slider and a nice little portage spot that you can drive right up and in and. Get snuck into the back in, in that way, so.
I mean, if we look at this limited commercial corridor, if you go further down the street, it would be a little bit more challenging.
Yeah.
So that's a perfect spot. I think that's a perfect.
Is it, is it the end corner?
Yeah, so it's the end cap space, it's a forty-two hundred square foot space. Um, the, right now, it was Bay State Home Infusions, so it has a showroom area, a couple offices, and then a large warehouse portion. Um, there's a loading dock that goes out the back with, um, uh, dumpsters right there and also oxygen storage there, so that lines up for. Um, for, for certain regulation things that I would need, because there would be oxygen in the building, but they already have previously had that in that building, um, with the previous tenant. It would not be any, um, structural changes to the footprint. Um. And I think. There, like I said, there's no overnight boarding at this point.
It's still a perfect location, even if there were.
And there's a seventeen hundred square foot vacant spot in that building before we get to the, um. I think it's the endodontist is there, and that doesn't have anything in it, so there's no front door to it, it would either need to be added on to either side, we have. I, in my L O I, I asked for first rate of refusal on that, so if I did grow into a general practice over time, as these smaller clinics start to close. Um, I have the infrastructure to be able to build that, so.
Yeah.
But there is a shortage of vets.
There's a huge shortage of vets, and it's only, it's not getting any better, so.
And people are getting animals and they're not, you know, it's a shortage.
But we should just be clear that it is not a special permit here in yet, or are we the?
It's be the zoning board appeals that would, if you initiate a zoning change and it ends up getting adopted by the city council, then a special permit will be required from the zoning board.
Yes, so we're not evaluating, so you're very well prepared for that meeting.
Yes.
And just to be clear, our job is to decide whether or not this, a use like this, this use in this category is appropriate for the limited commercial district overall.
Exactly.
This is an example of what that could look like, go ahead.
Do you have the zoning map open right now, or should I walk over there and look at it?
I do have, it's, it's basically Federal Street from Pleasant up to.
Yeah, that red, that red area. Yeah.
And so the Pioneer Vet Hospital is this lot right here, right? And then, um, Greenfield Vet is right there, so we got a nice little, yeah.
So that's why I didn't think it was an issue.
Yeah.
My perspective is. So just looking at the use table now, you, you're not. Recommending that it be allowable use, you're recommending that it, you want it to be a special permit, right? Or we could decide to do it with one.
You said either one, I, I.
We can make a recommendation.
To me, it should be special permit, and that's why I mentioned special permit, but you can make it by rights.
So just to review, right now, the animal kennel, kennel or hospital, which is fallen into, right? That's what we're talking about.
Animal hospital.
Yeah, so that is currently not allowed by right anywhere, but it is allowed. By special permit, as you said, in the general commercial district, the other four places it's allowed by special permit are in residential districts, all of the residential districts in the city. So if we think it's appropriate to have this in a residential district, it certainly seems appropriate to have it in a limited commercial district.
Yeah.
I, I think it should, it should be.
A special permit, so that's, you have, you have to prove that it, you're gonna manage it right and design it right and.
But you would think there would be more concern and more desire to have it reviewed in a residential area than in the commercial.
Hence the special permit, yeah.
But, but you would think it would, but it's.
Right, so to me, the logic, it's, it's like, it's a no-brainer.
Is there any logic to it not being included there? What's the reason not to have this? You know, it might have been, uh, it might have been tied together with the animal kennel. The use category is in the zoning now, it's animal kennel slash animal hospital, and Ollie's Law came out, and that eliminates special permit requirements for animal kennels, dogs mostly. And so maybe that was the reason, that wasn't here in eighty-nine when it happened, but.
With the kennels are separate from animal hospitals, so we're really just talking about animal hospitals.
So is the definition of an animal hospital different than an animal kennel now?
Because it. The ordinance has not been amended since Ollie's Law. The ordinance has not been amended since Ollie's law.
So animal kennel or hospital together, which it says it's about housing three dogs or more than six months old overnight at like one time. It puts you in the kennel thing. So that it's all the same definition. So.
How are kennels?
Well, after Ollie's law, which came out recently, I think 2024, it's saying that you can't like require a, the city clerk's office can't require a license for animal kennel, dog licenses. And also the city requires special permit from a land use board. You can't do that anymore based on the new law called Ollie's law. They're fully have to amend the ordinance to allow, to take away that kennel warding from the ordinance.
So for a kennel, if someone wants to have a kennel and have, you know, boarding or something like that, or just more than a certain amount of dogs, four, I think it's more than four. They have to go to the city clerk and get a.
More than three dogs. Yeah. They have to go to the city clerk and get the license.
So you can have a kennel anywhere?
You can have a kennel anywhere now.
So if it's on the same line of definition, animal kennel or hospital, would that be looped together?
No, unfortunately.
Just trying.
Yeah. Good try though.
The change only applies to kennels.
Yes.
Yeah. So then there's another question that somebody's brought up. If I'm not running this as a hospital and more as a clinic, because hospitals have overnight care, would that fall under medical clinic, which is allowed by special permit in that limited commercial?
If there's no overnight order?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out kind of what swiftness wise in terms of everything kind of like lending and leases and all of that kind of stack up on this approval.
Are medical facilities, does it matter who they're targeted towards? Humans or animals?
It doesn't say in the definitions in the zoning.
I mean, the fact that there's a separate definition for animal hospital and medical clinic. One would assume that they're two different things and that the view.
There's human patients.
Exactly.
Medical center. Yeah.
So yeah, that's what I was saying. The fact that there's two separate definitions.
Human patients.
It also says no overnight.
So unfortunately it doesn't meet that definition.
Yeah. Unless we change that definition. We could change that definition.
That definition could be changed as well.
Where, where is that allowed?
But either case, the zoning amendment process is about 90 days. Even to change that definition or to allow this special permit at the same timeframe, same process.
The, I think that the definition of animal hospital needs to be updated no matter what happens. Because seeing a structure used for the harboring and care of more than three dogs. I don't think that's an accurate definition for a veterinary hospital. So I think just overall at some point, that probably would help have some improvement. But I don't need to spearhead that.
Well, it sounds like the sense of the board is that we would be amenable to making this zoning amendment. It's thought.
Initiating it.
Initiate. The zoning amendment. Yeah.
I think it's still a question of which, what's the right approach?
Whether it's just allowed versus whether it's allowed by permit as a right versus.
Yeah. Or do we change the definition of medical center and take out the word human? And so what's, I think this should be perceived as we're changing the zoning because it just makes sense. As definitely not because of your project, because that's, we're not supposed to think about it that way. You're just.
No, I think that's why I said this definition doesn't make sense. Yeah.
So when we have an instance like this, it gives us a chance to look at the ordinance and make sure it makes sense for, you know, practical purposes. And it seems like it might, I don't know what the political, so first of all, from your perspective, to get the zoning changed. Then you can file a special permit and go through that process. And that's going to take six months, right? Totally. Put those two together.
If you put it together, maybe you can do in 60 days, zoning amendment, 60 to 90 days in the special permit process, including the 20 day. We upgraded about 60 days. So 120 days, which is under six months, but it's still getting up there.
Cause I don't know if the landlord's going to hold.
How much time did they give you?
About a double.
They wanted to, they wanted my lease to start July 1st, which I obviously didn't do. And so I bought at least another 30 days from that, but they want a timeline on what would be realistic. And they tried to blow off this zoning issue and say that it wasn't a problem and I should just sign the lease.
Do you have a build out period before you open?
Yeah. So I was hoping to open January 2026 before I realized, I thought I just needed a special permit for that. So I kind of built that in. And so now I'm looking at March 2026.
Can you get a building permit? If it's not allowable use or is the use not determined until try to get a CO?
Yeah. You wouldn't be able to obtain a building permit if use is not.
Maybe you could submit everything for review because it takes a few weeks, but they won't issue a permit until this is resolved.
If you went through a change in the definition of medical along the process, so it's same thing 90 days.
It wouldn't be a special permit after that.
Oh yeah. So that went by right, right? The medical clinic in there.
Yeah. Which is another reason. I mean, I think that the objective way to do this is, I mean, the easiest way in my opinion to justify a change like this is to just see if it's consistent with something else. There's just, there's this inconsistency where we allow human clinics, but not animal clinics. It's currently under the animal kennel definition, which says nothing about treatment. It doesn't seem like the right definition.
No.
What you're doing is much more of a medical clinic than an animal storage facility.
Yeah.
So it feels like your project shouldn't be in that category to begin with.
And even that is allowed now.
And we kind of don't have, apparently we don't have a medical veterinary clinic category to put you in.
Yeah.
So either we need to invent one or move you into one that already exists. So we could set up.
So what's the argument for having a separate one for humans and animals? And if there isn't one, we could just eliminate that word.
It, it would be the same process from our perspective. We could add a veterinary clinic category that looks a lot like the human one, but maybe there's, it might be like less, I don't know. There's probably some functional thing that's different, but maybe not. And then we could also make that allow, an allowable use in that district in the same move. And it would take the same amount of time. And that would be, I think, probably a cleaner process than trying to combine animals and humans in one.
Yes, I agree with you 100%.
Me too.
And it'd be hard for people to say that this shouldn't be allowed by right because all these other things are allowed by right that are very similar to it.
Yeah. And that's the fastest way to both solve this issue, resolve the problem that we have, and also allow them to proceed in a more.
And that, and, and just as a city, we, I have animals and have a hard time finding places.
Exactly.
I mean, it's clearly, we need more of these things and it's not.
And again, that's responsible.
So we want to initiate a zoning process to create a veterinary.
So veterinary center, you could say, and that would probably envelop clinic or hospital.
I'm, I'm sure that there's lots of precedents.
What we could do is, because you wouldn't want to. Existing category of animal kennel slash animal hospital. You wouldn't want to keep that and then add a third one.
No.
On a like, what would I, we suggest is keep the human thing separate.
Yeah.
Revise the existing animal kennel, animal hospital by getting kennels out of it 100% and reword the entire definition completely and make it by right in the limited commercial.
Yeah.
That's true.
I, I agree.
So you make that motion?
Do we need to like, write it now too? Or, because we wouldn't want to have to wait. Since this makes so much sense, there's no reason to like push it to multiple meetings into the future. Do, how do we, what's the?
Yeah. Actually, the board could take a vote to authorize Department of Planning and Development to prepare a zoning amendment as discussed here in the meeting minutes. And to forward that to the city council to initiate the zoning amendment.
Let's do it.
So that would be one vote to, to cover all that. Then I would write the ordinance, send a memo to the city council and to start this zoning event.
And then it comes back to us. Do we hold the hearing or does the zoning?
It comes back to you and then you'd have a joint public hearing with the EDC.
Maybe come to our meeting this time, right? They're turning to our meeting.
Or zoning amendment, joint public hearings.
Nothing zoning matter.
Yeah. They said as the.
We're going to have a new copy.
They said at the, the last thing we did, you know, the, the big step about housing that no more zoning minute for six months, but there was no vote on that. So.
Yeah. There's an animal.
So I can move forward with it.
Okay. Well, and this is business development in Greenfield. This is what we want. We want to see people that's a vacant site that needs to be used and that's a perfect use. And it's perfectly located for, to catch the surrounding towns. And I mean, that's ideal. Use that. I mean, I know a lot of the.
You know, our home zoning just makes sense.
Would anyone like to make a motion that Eric just suggested?
Make the motion that Eric described. I thought you had made this motion. You did not make an initial motion.
You want to make the motion?
Sounds like.
I'll take a motion to ask the, the planning department to draft a zoning revision to create a
new definition of animal clinic slash hospital.
Yeah.
And allow by right within the LC zoning district. And to initiate the zoning amendment process with the city council.
And would that also eliminate the current design provisions on kennels? Cause we have to get rid of those, don't we?
Yeah. Part of this, my definition will be getting rid of the word kennel completely due to Ollie's law. We would also address meeting Ollie's law.
Perfect. Perfect. I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Can we just, I had a quick discussion point. Um, are we only going to focus on the limited commercial district?
Perfect question. I was going to say the same thing again. That doesn't make any sense. The only have it be there. No.
Look at the medical clinic, which, which, where is that allowed by right, the regular human?
The human one? That is a good question. Medical center, it's allowed.
It's allowed in H. It's special permit CC, limited commercial, general commercial. OGI and PI. No, not PI. O, O and general industrial. And what's the O again? I can't.
Office.
Huh?
Office.
Office. Yeah. It's allowed there.
Yeah. So that makes a lot of sense. That, that would allow it in the.
Medical center clinic, including et cetera. It's not allowed in residential areas.
So to match in medical center, that, that just makes it more logical.
Did you say that it wasn't allowed in residential?
Right.
I would say it should be special permit for residential. Because if I were to open like a large animal hospital, you'd be looking more in the residential districts than in the commercial districts. And I, because I would have horses coming to me. So say if I lived in, if I was going to build a facility in Greenfield, I couldn't put that in any of the commercial districts. I'd be looking on the outskirts for accessibility for those types of things. Or even if I had a combination clinic where I had mixed animals coming in. So I think special permit would allow that in the future if that were to come up ever. Rather than kind of just being not allowed. Um, cause also you guys would love to drive up to a clinic that was on a big grassy area and have a large outdoor space. So.
Yeah. So it sounds like, and then again, from consistency sake, and the previous definition of animal kennel or hospital was special permit in all residential districts. So we could just keep that.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Yeah.
So would that be RB, RC, RA and semi-residential?
Well, that's what.
That's what it is now.
If that's going to be a sticking point, it seems like the more urban districts, it's less likely you would open that facility on, you know.
So we just have to get rid of the.
Neighborhood. It'd be just to remove any political risk. Someone's going to decide, they want to fight this because they interpreted it as allowing animal hospitals right next to their house.
There you are.
Yeah. So the RA, semi-residential might want to just say no one else to, that's true.
Too dense.
It's too dense of an area and yeah, and your argument about level of horses would only really be the RB or RC.
And the definition of animal kennel or hospital didn't say anything about medical treatment. It was like three dogs. And it seemed like you used to be able to have three dogs in, in a residential neighborhood, but it's a different story to have a medical clinic. For consistency's sake, from your perspective, the only sites that are appropriate for an equine facility would be like the white is the RA.
Yeah.
Yellow is.
White is RC and green is RB. Those are the big lots.
Those would be the only.
Agricultural setting. So maybe if it's just RB and RC, special permit. And then no for RA and.
Can we vote on that motion?
Yeah. Well, I think we modified with your, your point that you should think about the other districts. Do you go on all that?
Yeah. So with the friendly amendment, there's a vote.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Cool.
I'm Amanda. I'm her realtor. So we've all been on to it. Hi. How's the baby?
Oh, good.
So if you're doing this, it's going to eliminate her need to get in front of another board to present this. Is that correct?
She will not need a special permit.
But what I'm saying is like, she's not going to need to like pass this stuff out and explain herself again to another.
As long as what she's doing is consistent with the definition that.
Because you're doing the legwork to, or he's doing the legwork to make that shift, to send it to the zoning board.
To testify at the hearings, saying what a great idea this is, the change of zoning law. But her actual project won't need an application if she.
Okay.
No zoning board. Allowed.
Need to get this clear by things. So if once, if the zoning amendment goes through and gets passed on city council, then it's a by right use, but all by right uses of over $5,000 square feet over, that meets the site plan definition of what requires site plan. May fall into that and it'd be a by right site plan review by this board, planning board.
So it's 42,000 square feet. So under five. Yeah. Sorry. Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Four thousand, two hundred, one hundred and twenty-seven.
So that's why I was viewing an existing building with existing parking is just, it would then just be demonstrate she's got sufficient parking and access and lighting for.
Exactly. For, for the, if she came before the. It's five thousand. So under five dollars administrative site plan review by the inspector of buildings.
It's interesting. We just had this discussion earlier about making sure that in site plan review, we make sure that the tree. You know, so this is important.
Yeah.
You're saying this is how many days to get this done? If it all goes on, I'm just like trying to line this up.
Man, I typically tell people the zoning amendment takes 90 days, could be quicker.
Then after that, there's no.
No, nothing else to do.
Because it's below the threshold for site planner view.
And will we get notified with that change? So she knows she can just do it?
Or is creep the city council?
Well, I, yeah.
You just got to follow it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would speak to the, um, to Hannah at the Greenfield Business Association and just build up support also back group. If I know when the, the hearing is and I'm around, I would definitely come and support this. Because this is exactly what we need in Greenfield.
We're saying you should do that.
Yeah. I've got plenty to hand out.
Yeah.
Everybody has pets. I don't have to pitch it that bad. Like it's pretty easy.
Exactly. But get, you know, do the legwork with different people who have.
Yeah.
Have a voice with the.
There's a lot of resistance to zoning.
Yeah.
Down by some people. Uh, and this could be perceived as that potentially. I mean, it's not really because it's changing the whole definition across the whole city. But I think you'd be, personally, I think you'd be well served to advocate for this on the basis. We need, we need more veterinary clinics. Not that you have this great site and if you don't get this done in 90 days, it's like.
Yeah. No, this, I'm going to, yeah, we don't need to.
There is a huge.
We're just going to follow.
If anybody with a new pet trying to find a vet.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah. It would be, I don't know what.
Just give me a call every couple of weeks and I'll give you the update.
Okay.
Agenda, would it likely be on?
I still want to slip through.
Yeah. I mean, so the earliest this could be initiated by the city council is that not this meeting, but the August meeting. Because this, uh, this is the way it works. The committee chairs is the first Tuesday and you have to get everything before them. And then they set all their subcommittees and city council agenda based on that. You gotta get it five days before this first Tuesday of the month. So first Tuesday of this month, it's already come and gone. So it's next month.
Okay. And then would, could they get that done in one meeting? Hopefully. If it seems straightforward.
They want to prove it on the spot though.
No, what they're going to do is this, they're going to officially take a vote to initiate it and to revend it back to the EDC, which is a subcommittee of themselves and the planning board to hold the joint public hearing. But joint public hearing will be held, needs to be like two weeks out. We need about three weeks to get all the public.
Yeah.
Legal notices in the recorder and get everything all set. And then they hold that joint public hearing. And the next available city council meeting could be the same month. They report back to the full city council and they board on it.
So maybe September?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're going to, should definitely be done by September hopefully.
Okay. Cause I was, in my head, I was thinking October. So I set myself, I set my sights low.
Well, just in case.
Oh, well, I, don't worry. I think lending wise, it's still gonna take for underwriting on all of that. So if, if.
Well, he described.
I don't even know if they're gonna take this.
Right. He described the perfect process.
Yeah.
See what comes out.
Hurricanes.
You can also talk, you could talk to some councils and get a feel for the, if they would have any problem with this whatsoever, just kind of prime the pump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thanks for, thanks for doing that for.
Tell your friends. Ten percent discount, no kidding.
It's funny because also a medical emergency care facility.
I know, so it's two.
That's it for Greenfield. My doctor feeling good recently. And, um, and it was a week, they, they said, go there, because we have no time for appointments, just go there. So you'll be in good company.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, while we're on zoning amendments, uh, can I give you a quick update? Accessory drawing minutes. So here's the situation. So had our first person that applied for billing permit for ATU, under the new board visits, and, uh, it's a two family. Uh, you remember what we did with two families. Two families, we called them an unprotected ADU.
Yeah.
Barring a special permit. The new frequently asked questions and a new case came out April fourteenth this year. Say that our ordinance is now out of compliance with state law. We need to amend it. We should have never listened for a second to the opposition group.
Oh.
It pushed us that way and now we're out of compliance.
Ah.
That nothing was April, nothing their proposal would have came. Most of being accepted by the state as meeting the new, new law. What we did doesn't meet the new law. What we gotta do, here's the actual reality of it. One family, two family, three family and multifamily properties in existence have to allow a protected ADU period, even if they're not compliant.
That's what I understood. And, and then we spoke about this just the other day.
But that's not what the initial guidance and the state said.
Right, no, yeah, I know.
So months of meetings, they did not say that. They made it clear you could do it the way we did our ordinance. They, they used our ordinance as the example why they were given the trainings.
I know, they changed their mind.
And now we're out of compliance.
And, and we could again get all this opposition?
Well, no, no, no. The opposition will just chuck them off and they can have their thirty seconds or two minutes to talk. And after that, you're done.
My god.
So we're gonna do the hearing process all over again?
We have to do the whole process over and we have to adopt this if we want to be in compliance with state.
And we have to be in compliance with state.
So can these people just do, do this?
Oh, yes, we have to issue the building permit for, for that fourteen pair street, no matter.
So did they appeal?
No, no, the guy was smart himself and he said, oh, no, this new case came out. And I said, well, let me look at this new case. It's a very new case, April fourteenth, that's new. So case law.
Where was it?
And it was, uh, east, uh, east something's town, east something out.
So, so can this, I, I know you're upset about this and I can appreciate. We have to go, we accommodated something that.
Meetings about this, I.
So is the issue that why is our change now allowed? Because we're requiring a special permit for an ADU and it should be as of right?
Yeah, we're, if it's a two family, our definition of unprotected, some people call it a local ADU, we call it, we decided to call it an unprotected ADU. And we're saying that two and three families, you need a special permit to do a detached ADU. Right. And the single family is allowed by right with the protected ADU. That's what the initial guidance was and that's. But according to case law and the frequently updated frequently asked questions, there was a direct question that said, can you, uh, require a special permit for a detached ADU on a two family or three family? No, you can't. It's clearly, it's stated clearly, yes.
Said no.
Yeah, so and then they highlighted the new case law, read this and this is why you can't.
Yeah, that, that's not consistent with how it was.
I mean, it's, it makes complete sense. And if the setbacks and areas and all of that, I mean, like, let people put in their ADU for crying out loud. This is such a solution to our housing prices. It's the low hanging fruit. I can't believe.
And what this means is if you have a two family, you can put a detached ADU in your yard without.
Turn your garage into an ADU.
Which is sort of what we, well, some of us wanted.
That's what we wanted to be.
Ended up compromising in order to create some goodwill.
Yes.
But is, so, so now effectively, so what can this person do? Because we're out of compliance, that if we were in compliance and instead it was allowed, they couldn't do what we can control. Cause one strategy is just say, okay, like, people can just do it anyway.
We have to get it, we have to get it in compliance.
Well, but in the meantime, we're not stopping any housing we're gonna build.
Yeah, the way it works now, I mean, we could ignore the ordinance, it's not a force it, but I'd prefer to bring it in line with the proper language.
We can wait for six months if you want to take a pause and then solve it later.
No, 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 no. We're gonna do it because we, then we open ourselves up to lawsuits.
We have, well, they can just, they can lawsuit, because they can just ignore it. The consequence is they can ignore that part of the.
No, no, we have to not enforce it. We have to issue the building.
We have to.
Yeah.
Our attorney, we got a legal opinion too, and the legal said, yeah, you have to issue the building permit and you're out of compliance and state.
So we just what's the urgency to, we have to change the order to go through the process. What's the urgency of doing that? If we can.
No, media, we do, take our time doing it.
Well, we're changing ordinances already for animal things. Let's just do it all at once.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this could be, so we could, uh, submit a round of amendments. One would be this animal clinic.
Right.
One would be this and this, two others that I had to mention too, if you want.
Um, so unfortunately, this topic is not on the agenda. So just in terms of like open meeting law, I don't think we could act on it. This, uh, meeting, I think we have to put it on the agenda.
And this particular topic is one that we're careful about.
Okay, so, but we're allowed to.
I mean, we're allowed, there's no votes or anything or any substantial.
We don't have a choice, because if we don't do it, we're gonna get hauled into Landport in Boston for non-compliance.
Right, but to, to initiate the process for zoning change.
That should be on an agenda.
We have to.
I just want to report to you that we're not in compliance and I can do that if it's not in the agenda.
Right.
It's not in compliance, just to give you an update.
So we just won't enforce it for now.
Exactly.
We're just, yeah, we're just trying to get clarification. You're right.
But thank you for that.
Well, that is ironic.
So, so with that discussion, so the purpose of that discussion was to understand what we need to talk about next time.
Exactly, exactly. So that'll be on the future agenda.
Yeah.
And, uh.
But maybe we can just get all these things pitched at the same time?
Yeah.
City council.
That'll slow them down by a month at least. This will take forever. If, if we don't put forward the animal clinic thing now, then that project is slowed down.
No, but I'm, I think if we stick to the timeline we presented to them, we, we can't fit in this zoning change because it's a compliance issue. We can't just go straight to city council.
We can't.
Yeah, we, we should put it on an agenda, discuss it, as Sarah mentioned, and, you know, so that's automatic, timeframe of this one.
We can't make an action on it, period.
And we can't have a special meeting to expedite, so.
Oh, you could have a special meeting. But why, oh, this is summer, it's gonna be hard.
All right, well, let's talk about it next time.
But yes.
What, what's your other item? You said you did a couple others only on?
Yeah, we'll mention it at the next, uh, but there are a couple other amendments, uh.
They're gonna get you as animated as, uh, that one?
No, basic amendments.
Those would be action items at the next men, agenda or discussion item?
Uh, discussed. And action items, it'd be both.
Okay, so we're not missing time by not hearing about it now. Okay. All right, that's great. So I think now we can move on to item B. Planning boards continue discussion of proposed master plan chapter updates with specific books on revision goals, strategy and implementation items of the natural, historic, cultural resource. The resources chapter.
So at the last, Nancy, at the last meeting, we were going through, like, the chair was reading each item. I don't know if you want to continue with that same rhythm or style?
We discussed whether or not we should.
Was that too?
I, I made a comment suggesting that we should not, and I want to say that I didn't mean to disparage the work that's been done under the process and it's great work. I did not realize we were the actual authorizing body, that the spirit of body that actually is, so I understand George's sense of why, you know, it needs to be reviewed carefully. Though line by line, word by word, it's very, it's laborious and it's very good work to do. So it would be nice though to discuss the work and focus on certain parts, have time for it. But if you feel it's necessary to go line by line. I, I think we're, but I, but I do want to come on the work. It's great work and I didn't mean to disparage it all, Nancy. So, that's like, cause I, I said last time.
Can I, can I just, um, float the additional comment that we discussed potentially adding? Um, I had come up with establish and maybe Nancy, you can comment on it. Can, can I invite Nancy to comment on something?
Sure. Um, can you just give me, um, where we're at?
Okay, so at the last meeting, we, we.
How far did we make it?
It looks like in the minutes, it says we were discussing goal four under, um, natural, historic and cultural resources.
And then for goal two point two, I was going to draft an addition to involve public. And, um, which is what I was going to read out to everybody.
Yeah.
Do I do that or not?
Verification, so I understand where we're at.
Okay.
How we're gonna.
And this, this, we don't have to do this tonight. We can wait till.
Yeah, so let me, uh, let's get this straight. So we have the Conway School did a nice project. And, uh, in order to adopt that, the board needs to look at it. So the implementation committee looked at it, made their recommendations, forwarded it forward. Now you're doing your final, final review of this work that the students at Conway School did. Now, new chapters, updated chapters of our existing twenty fourteen sustainable master plan. And you're saying you're going through it line by line? See, my thing would be that you'd be reviewing the document as a whole at this time. Maybe highlight some things that you might want to discuss or think need to be improved, but to go through the entire thing line by line?
I wish you were here last time.
That's a little bit laborious.
It was, we only got to.
And, you know, you're never gonna get this thing adopted. I mean, it's, the Conway School did good work. It needs to be, you know, there's students, so you need to, we need to look at it and as.
Well, that was, that was out the opinion of the chair at the last meeting.
Yeah, well, I have a different opinion from the chair. I mean, you're gonna, this thing should already be adopted, in my opinion. We should already have an updated two chapters of our.
We've already passed all those zoning amendments that were in here. I mean, they're all done. So it's lovely reading about that.
Meanwhile, the boards, if you're looking at this the same, and just reviewing it, one final review and, and either you like it or you don't, or you have some good new suggestions that should be in there that we missed, that the students missed, this implementation committee missed. But, you know, I mean, otherwise let's start over. Why do we even have to do the whole thing over?
I mean, in a way you're right, because there wasn't a big process. There was public involvement. There was, so.
It was a huge process.
Exactly.
Right.
Um.
It's just, it's our first time looking at it, but, and it is one that the plan, it is a planning board document, I guess, in the end of the day. But, um, it's been so much work that's been done by a lot of people.
Exactly.
And, uh, it's been processed.
And we've all read it.
And we've read it. Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to talk about any items that people think need attention. And then we can make a vote, but, um, we went through, you know, we got through both four.
So can I jump back then to the one ad that I would recommend in two point two? And I think Nancy, getting back to this, it was just somehow getting something in there about the, the public and fostering that. Cause a lot of people, homeowners, they want to plant trees, they want to do something. So I wanted to add that into that by adding one more action item, establish and promote a homeowner's tree planting and stewardship program throughout Greenfield using various incentives.
But isn't there one already?
No, not for the homeowners and not for.
Uh, can you, sorry, can you repeat that?
Okay, this, that, this would, this would go in section two point two.
Two point two.
And we would add, there are right now four items in there. And we would add, we would add a fifth one, establish and promote a homeowner, street tree planting and stewardship program throughout Greenfield using various incentives.
I thought Larry said that the tree committee currently offers trees to private landowners.
That's what I thought.
Within twenty feet. Twenty feet is the right of way, correct.
Okay.
There is a program already.
Yeah, but my, my point was that just to promote it and talk it up. So we have more people doing it, saying, oh, I want a tree. And I mean, I know.
But then we don't have to establish a program that exists.
Okay, so then we just promote. So for eliminate, establish and then promote a homer, homeowner.
Is it?
Promote, promote the program.
Yeah, or expand.
Yeah, promote, expand the program with incentives throughout, throughout Greenfield, so.
Promote and expand, fine.
Promote and expand. Okay.
Is there a way you could, uh, give me that page?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'll write it.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Great.
It was, it was just to make it more robust and get more people engaged in it.
Were there areas, Nancy, in this that were, there, you know, people struggled with or where there's anything that, you know, our old pine could be useful? Or was there pretty much consensus on what you got to?
I would say that the, um,
Actually, I'm gonna put resident.
We went, there were a group of us who had worked at the Conway School.
Mm-hmm.
And Eric was one of those. And we're not.
Oh, definitely, of course.
What?
Yes.
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 And, and then it came to the SGAIC committee and, you know, we, we went over it line by line.
Yeah.
It took us a long.
I got.
And, um, so, yeah, we were hoping that it's good to go and it can.
Yeah.
But clearly, as you say, this is your document, not ours.
Yeah.
And so, like, you need to feel comfortable about it. Um, so you can do whatever process is something that makes you feel comfortable, that you understand, document and this. There's something you do want to add, or if there's something that you hate. I guess you would bring that up. You feel there's something.
Yeah, but we're kind of the steward for this. We're not really driving this process in some ways. I mean, this process is driven by our group and people and we're now, we need to be the authorizing entity for it, but it's.
Well, initially, I mean, content is really driven by others. So when we had the nineteen seventy plan, which was forty years old, then we needed to upgrade, update the plan to twenty fourteen. It's one hundred percent the planning board's project. So you guys are the ones who are not this particular board, but the planning board are, is the one that did the entire process to get us our twenty fourteen.
So the process that was used to amend it was not for us to.
No, it was created for us. So initially, you know, master plan costs about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do for grants, a lot of money. And I was on the capital plan for years and never could get funding. And finally, the Franklin regional cost of governments needed to update their regional plans. They got a grant and part of the grant was a local community, the local master plan to match their regional plan. So I think it was that community, because we partnered with them a lot. And so they paid for our update of our master plan through the grant. But it's, the process though was a hundred percent through the planning board.
In two thousand fourteen.
And now we're just updating, because usually in ten years, ten to fifteen years, you want to start updating your chapters. Or sooner if there's major change in your community.
Were you involved back there originally in two thousand fourteen? Yeah. Was there more engagement by residents this time?
With a huge master plan steering committee and huge subcommittees and a lot of involvement, public forums. So it was a huge process.
It was a huge process.
And, and this time, the Conway School held, uh, two public meetings that were well attended.
Yes.
Well, the first was well attended, second.
You know, so there's discussion about updating the master plan and, you know, and I'm like, well, it's only ten years old. I can't you know, it was forty years old before and now it's ten years old. There's not that much change in the community. It doesn't need to be completely overhauled. And then a group like the Conway School comes in and that's what they do. And we can update these two chapters very, very, you know, lower cost than, than you have to pay a normal consultant. So a great opportunity. Let's partner with you and get a couple of chapters updated. So that was why I went through the Congress.
I see.
But if you think a lot has happened in ten years, we went through a pandemic, where things have changed the way, I mean, it's a lot, been a lot of changes in ten years. But if you think a lot has happened in 10 years, we went through a pandemic, where things have changed the way, I mean, it's a lot, been a lot of changes in 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking like land development and greenfield, there's not a lot of changes.
No, no, I agree.
As far as continued work, this couple of chapters, is there a resource to do more of these chapters? Or was a limited amount, this is what we could do, and this is it?
For the Conway School, that was it. We picked the two chapters that without, well, the land use chapter is one of the most important chapters. And the other one, that they just had some expertise in, students, that we picked up, give us resources.
So this is it, we'll do this and then we'll take a pause.
And then there'll be a pause, although there was discussion about the economic development chapters. But they're in the board with Amy Callahan, who might be trying to get a grant, new master update.
I see. Again, that'll be kind of graph dependent.
Yes, and, you know, piecemeal, you know. The main one, you had, we did it all at once, and then we paid $150,000 and hired a PhD, and it was a huge process. Update it, you usually do the same thing if you can, but by these dollars.
Yeah. Thank you, it's helpful.
And, and also involving the community in too many things, one after the other at once also becomes an issue that I get fatigue.
They get fatigue.
So we want to be really.
So, you know, I was anticipating that you would look at the work this, because that's what they do. There's a representative from the board here, George, right on the implementation committee. And they do good work, and they implement the master plan, they know it inside and out. So the work they did, I figured you'd look at it and say, maybe add a few things and it'd be done.
Well, George likes it so much, he wanted to review it very.
Okay.
And I do think it is a, a good point to make that. I think it's a good point to make that this is the, a, a planning board document and that, you know. For the next, you know, decade at least, that, you know, the planning board should.
Understand it.
Review this, understand that, kind of keep it in mind when making decisions.
Remember to memory.
Um, so, I mean, yeah, I do think that's a good point. But I, I think, I'm just going to suggest that maybe we might consider wrapping up the discussion of natural, historic, and cultural resources. And say that we're gonna, you know, give X amount of time instead of discussing land use. Because land use isn't on the agenda for today, but.
It's not. Nope, just the natural.
Yes, I, I'm comfortable with where it is.
Yeah.
And we'll do that in entirety next meeting.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was trying to get at.
So the only thing I was, I was, I had, I had felt was a little bit lacking. I don't know if it's lacking, so it's Greenfield's natural, historic, and cultural resources. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is because of the meeting I had earlier this week and the, and the work I've been doing with the GBA. You know, Greenfield has a history of innovation and industry that people forget about. And so it would be, it would be nice to have that also listed in here. Because when people think, when people see historic, they think like old houses and blah blah. They don't necessarily think about our industrial past.
Right.
So that, that was the only thing that I would add in that is to, you know, our history of industry and innovation. I would add to that, I don't know what, if everybody agrees, this would be under.
Well, I see where you would.
H, under eight, yeah. I would add a fourth and just emphasizing industry and innovation.
That would be goal eight.
In, in goal, yeah.
Oh, with the marketing.
Point one, yeah.
Action.
Marketing strategy. Would you do something in the actual marketing strategy one, or would you add a fourth?
Um, we could, I mean, it should, it just should be present, and I just didn't see it anywhere. That's the thing, so it could be, I, I think wider recognition. It's an integral part, this is, you know, it has to be an integral part of the city's identity. So maybe we add a fourth line, so we actually have that in there to not forget about industry and innovation, since we do.
Sort of promote Greenfield.
I mean, we celebrate the bees, we, everybody knows the Longstop Hive and the bees, but that's the only thing we talk about.
What would be your?
And dinosaurs, huh?
What would be your suggestion then?
I, I just industry and innovation, just something, so take pride and, and celebrate our groundbreaking first industry and innovation.
So celebrate and promote Greenfield, something?
Take pride and celebrate our groundbreaking history in industry and innovation.
I understand your point. Yeah, I understand your point. I blew a tear going, nothing about it.
Yeah.
And then found it fascinating, and, you know, went to the Museum of Industrial History and, you know, you had to sign up for it.
And you got to look for it.
Well, then you have to call the guy and you have to make an appointment.
Yeah, you won't even know we have that.
No, and the whole history, I was, it was incredible.
Labor law, we had Greenfield play an important, an important role in labor law, in innovation, in manufacturing. I mean, there's a lot of stuff, I mean, I'm biased because I come from that world, but it's, let's get it on.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a way to do it, number, second bullet, spam museum offerings and exhibition, I don't know, some way. You need to work with Eric to come up with something.
Yeah.
Well, I have celebrated and promote Greenfield's groundbreaking history and innovation and industry.
Yeah, we just, if we keep it vague enough, as long as it saves a place or, but you want to keep it vague enough, then it allows multiple things. Because it could become part of an annual festival, it could become part of a month-long thing. Let's celebrate, you know, green field innovation, whatever, it could be a part of the program in the schools, it could be. So you want it vague enough, but you still want it in there, so it's earmarked, does that make sense?
Okay. I do agree with you that that falls under goal eight.
Yeah, yeah. That's the only place I could think to put it.
Cool, got it.
Okay. Let's see, I had some more stuff on the next page.
Did it a vote to accept it, or are we less formal than that?
I don't think we took any votes last.
In the end, do, do accept the chapter. But let me see now, maybe just right now, we just do this.
This is a chapter by itself in natural resources, or is this part of, is, is land use a separate chapter?
Yes, land use separate chapters. I was thinking you review the land use chapter in the next couple of meetings and then vote to approve, and then vote, vote to approve them.
Okay.
Doubt, you see the chapter, right, as the master plan.
So am I right, there's only one page of land, land use, or did I, am I missing a page?
There has to be.
It's 20 pages.
Okay, so.
One, two, three, four pages.
That's what I thought.
Five, go up to five point three.
My, my printer prepped that, I only have.
Yeah, five point three, yeah.
I must have pulled that, okay, whatever, I thought I had more notes.
A lot of them.
I had a, because I have a couple of notes on that.
So no real votes are necessary now, it's just good language, and then you could work on the land use, and then take an overall vote, figure out the chapters.
Yeah, I think we should put the overall vote on the agenda as an action.
As an action.
Yeah, I mean, we could not do it if we feel like we're not ready, but.
So we should all come to our comments in the next meeting?
Yeah.
Should we email them ahead of time to Eric, and he can distribute, or not?
I don't know about the open meeting.
I was just wondering.
I would just.
Okay.
Yes, just talk about it.
That's why, yeah, that's why I didn't email last time.
I think helpful framing from Eric, though, that we don't, it's big picture stuff, like something is missing. Like the things you pointed out are like, I'm not even seeing that anywhere, so.
Exactly, and that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, that's great.
And then also emphasizing having something in there to get the public in, make it a goal.
Excellent.
An action on it. Okay.
Okay, so we're done with that?
Good work.
Okay, next. Thanks to Nancy.
What? I'm looking more at things.
Yeah, we're just like.
Are you okay with the ads?
As the what?
Are you okay with the additions?
Oh, absolutely, okay, I love it, the innovation, that's something that's important to me.
Yeah, you know, exactly, that's it, I mean, some, that started every, that started a whole movement. People don't know about, right, in Greenfield?
Well, well, yeah, Greenfield's not some basic stuff.
That's the thing, nobody, nobody talks about that.
Like in recent history, I'm thinking about, you know, what's happening with their jails, and how, how we need to do that.
Exactly, exactly.
I learned about something just the other day, that, oh, I know, transportation. So, uh, um, Michael Bro was talking about the, the access program that, uh, for FRTA has created. Is now being.
On demand.
Across the state. So, you know, it's constant.
Exactly, we've got to, we've got to foster that and celebrate it and celebrate it. So.
Pride, build pride.
Yeah, we need that, because one thing, one thing that came up in this meeting we had this week. Is this, there's this kind of collective depression and longing for the heydays of Greenfield in the 60s all the time. Yet, you know, it's like, we've got amazing stuff going on, we need to like look forward and, wow, look at all, all that we're doing here. There is some great stuff happening here, don't be so down on Greenfield. So that's, that's why, because I've been hearing a lot about that, like.
Struggle with the moments on the street and.
Yeah, but that's everywhere, that's everywhere.
The other day, someone said to me, I was, it was, it's, it's really rough, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it is. And, and look at the facility that's being built for the public, like discussing, that's, that's going to be, yeah. Be the way.
Yeah.
All right, good, next on the agenda, last.
Get us home.
We don't have an A and R.
Get us home.
Oh, oh.
You don't, right?
No, we're not.
No, we have, we have an A and R.
Next item, approval not required, plan endorsement for lots at 60 James Street, Sisters Text, map 23 lot 19, submitted by Carl in Woodruff. And I should just note that this is my neighbor across the street, and I have no financial interest in this project whatsoever, just happen to live across the street.
Do you have to accuse yourself?
No, it just has to make the statement.
It has to make, that's right, that's, I read that.
If I had an interest, there's, but I don't.
Um, I'll make a motion that we endorse the A and R plan for the lots at 60 James Street.
Do we need, is there any caveats from your perspective, Eric, or does it meet the criteria?
This one's pretty straightforward, they're taking this lot that is one now and breaking it into two lots. At both meets frontage requirement.
And then there's those shared drain, there's easement there or something?
This is a drainage easement here. Which is on this person's lot, but it's identified as the easement area, but it's still on lot 1A.
Yeah, and they have to, by law, you're not allowed to shed water onto your neighbor's land, so they have to create that easement that allows that, right?
That could have been the reason they established it, it could be other reasons as well. But yes, they cannot create drainage flowing out of someone else's neighborhood, or father, neighbor and brother.
If they need the requirement, we do have to officially endorse them.
Our approval's not required.
But, but if we don't endorse them?
It sits longer.
Suit.
No, it, it, there's like a, an expiration date.
Oh, it's just good.
It sits there for a month and does nothing.
The time it gets clocked in, 21 days, if you take no action, it's constructively approved.
But I like the fact that they put in the drainage easement, so I wholeheartedly approve of that.
What, but just tell me, what is the purpose of our review?
Sometimes, you know, a lot of, for example, Franklin County has two towns that have planners. The rest of the 24 towns don't have planners, so the plan goes before a board that has no planner, no previous preview. You must look at it and determine if it meets the, meets the criteria. The boards and these 24 towns that don't have planning staff, they got to do that themselves. If you're fortunate, in my view, they have planning staff, so I do all that, and by the time it gets before you, that's all you do, is sign it. But if you're one of those 24 towns with no planning staff, then you really have to review it and make the determinations yourself. Right, so that's why.
But if you don't sign it, it doesn't move forward, I mean, you need to approve it as the planning.
No, I just make sure it meets the criteria, so it gets before, um, right, but if you're in one of these other 24 towns, nobody does it.
But if it doesn't.
No matter what.
It doesn't meet the criteria, how does it get stopped?
I don't allow it to go before you.
Nancy, thanks for coming.
And if something doesn't go before us, then it can't happen. So even though it doesn't require our approval, it does have to go for us in order for it.
I'm saying, the only reason I would not allow it to go before you is if the plan is incorrect and you couldn't endorse it anyways. Right?
I understand.
So they don't meet the front, I would say, no, you can't go before the board, this doesn't meet the criteria.
The clock that we talked about, that if we don't act, it gets approved, that clock only starts if you've advanced it to us.
Exactly, if I say that.
Advancing, nothing happens.
And when the advancement includes Form A, which is the form they fill out that goes with this, that gets clocked in at the city clerk, that starts the 21-day period, that if you don't take action, it's constructively approved. But it would never get clocked in if it doesn't meet this. Whereas those 24 other towns, they bring it right to the city clerk, clocked it in, it goes before the planning boards, whether it meets the criteria or not. So the board at, at that, those 24 towns have to actually go through it and make sure that it actually is.
They don't have approval not required.
No, they do, it's just called the same thing, but they could say at that meeting, these 24 towns, they don't have a planner, no, you don't, we can't endorse this plan. Doesn't need to prepare here, and you can tell them to go away and come back with a new plan.
But that's just so funny, because it's called not approving, but it's, it.
It's called approval not required, because it doesn't need.
But endorsement, endorsement is required.
Yes, but this is why it's called approval not required, it, it doesn't require subdivision approval. All other 49 states in, in the United States require subdivision approval for something like this.
Really?
Where the only state out of 50 that allows an A and R plan is. Which is a bad thing, and the housing lobby of Boston is so powerful that this will never get changed properly, never seen ever, but hasn't been changed in 30 years, and they've been trying to change it. The housing lobby is powerful, and why is this bad? Say theoretically, a guy owns a thousand miles of land on a public road, and he can create a thousand lots, and it meets the criteria, you have to sign off. Thousand lots, a mile long, miles long.
That would be.
That's urban sprawl, it's, it's not a good thing.
It's sprawl.
If we don't see plans like that, but theoretically it could happen, whereas in every other state in the union, it's a subdivision approval process. That goes before a board, a public hearing is held, all that stuff.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Is that, is that created any problems here, or is it?
It creates urban sprawl, in urban sprawl, if you know, land develops get more than the population. So land gets eaten more than the population's actually growing, called urban sprawl, and that's not a good thing.
And that's exactly what's happened in Greenfield, our population has been stagnant, but if you go through, do the exercise of Google Earth, and go as far back as you can, and they flip through, they do a time lapse thing of development. And you, you can see, it just grows out and out and out, and then if you look at the same time, what the population is flat.
You know, not so bad here in Massachusetts, we have hills, rivers, wetlands, a stop, all that, but if you're out in Texas and Kansas and the Midwest.
It just.
But you can't do it there.
That's why they don't allow it, in ours there, it's all subdivision approval process.
Very interesting.
They have to, for that education.
Lesson in history of planning and.
Yeah, because I just had to bring that out, because you're, you're like, why are you even bothered with this? We just have to sign it every time, but that, that's why, because you have a planner that does all this for you, and so you don't have to worry about it. But these other communities don't have planners, they got to do it all themselves, so.
And sometimes the, the towns get sued because they, they decide the wrong thing.
Yes, exactly, there's so much case line A and Rs where they.
So much in Landport.
Yeah.
And it's a couple-year process.
You know, so far, you know.
Towns get sued and they lose, and they cost them a lot of money.
Never had a problem with an A and R so far.
Yeah, or pretty reasonable, and we, we got it together down here.
Um, so I made a motion, but it was never seconded.
Second, I'll let someone else second, just do this.
Okay, who hasn't seconded something tonight?
I'll second them.
I seconded a couple of things, so.
Good, any further discussion?
Give everybody a chance.
All in favor of endorsing this A and R plan?
Aye.
Aye. It helps me to know that we do have to endorse.
Yes.
I'll make a further motion, um, and this was made last time, so I assume it's necessary. Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the A and R plan on behalf of the board.
Can you change it to acting chair, so you can sign it tonight?
Oh, sure, I will make the motion that the acting chair be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So you're the only one signing?
That's right. Good, thank you for bringing all that up.
Fantastic.
Okay, and that's it, so no board or staff reports? Is there anything else you wanted to say, Eric, or did you cover what you wanted to report from a staff standpoint?
Yeah, unfortunately, and Miss Sarah's right, the city clerk's getting really strict on open meeting law, so we didn't have anything listed here, so no, nothing to report.
But, but it sounds like you've got some ideas for the next agenda.
Yes.
And put those on there.
So the next meeting would be Thursday, August 7?
Yes.
I should be able to make it unless anything comes up last minute, but I'm planning on it. I should be able to make it unless anything comes up last minute, but I'm planning on it.
Is anyone not available for that video? Come around.
I'm good.
Excellent.
Great. Need a motion to adjourn?
Please.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I've ended seven thirty-two P M, if I'm supposed to say that.